Well, good evening. I will say Dr. Coy and I are really excited to talk to you tonight about the culture of recognition and providing a balanced scorecard update on recognizing and investing in our North Kansas City school staff. Not only is it something that we're really passionate about, I will say, I know that this is something that is a top priority for our board. I recall specific conversations during our board retreat this summer where it was really clear to me your desire to prioritize and really take care of our staff. And so I'm hopeful that what we have prepared for you tonight helps further those goals. So at convocation, Dr. Clemens and Dr. Daniels carried forth that same message and spirit of taking care of our people when they reminded us of our identity as champions for all students, but also charged us to be the same for others and for each other. This work is also grounded in our five-year strategic plan. Tonight specifically, we've got two action plans that we're going to be referencing from Strategy Three, Action Plan One and Action Three, I'm sorry, Action Plan One and Action Four. The board's commitment to this work is grounded in the voices of the community members who came together and said that ensuring, developing, and supporting healthy and highly capable workforce is going to be a key lever and a strategy for our continued success. And so we're going to highlight plans that are related to that. As with any initiative, we started with the data. What are our people saying to us about the topic of recognition? We have our annual employee engagement survey that provides some insights. There was also a recognition study done as a follow-up to the employee engagement survey to really dive into the question of what does recognition mean to you? And then finally, we have our well-being focus groups that were conducted this summer. And although recognition wasn't a primary focus of those conversations, when you asked staff, "What are the factors that impact your overall well-being in the workplace?", there were some very key factors that aligned really well with the topic of being recognized, valued, and supported. And so we're drawing information from all three of those sources for you tonight. Starting with the employee engagement survey, I have just a few numbers I want to highlight for you. You'll have a full report of the employee engagement survey coming your way soon. But just to provide some context, overall, last year, we're seeing some pretty good numbers, some increases with overall employee engagement. K-12 Insight identified that 79% of our employees are categorized as highly engaged or engaged. And on the self-reported end of that, we've got 92% of our staff who are saying, "I am engaged in my work." In relation to those numbers, though, when you dive into some of those subcomponents of the survey and look at feedback and recognition specifically, there is a statement that says employees are recognized for their high-quality work and accomplishments. And we're seeing 57% of our staff saying that this is true for their colleagues, and then 51% saying this is true for them. "I am personally recognized for my accomplishments." So highlighting that this is an area needing more attention for us. On the side of professional development, we have a category related to career development. And there's a statement that says, "The district encourages continued education and professional growth." So seeing some positive numbers there with 74% of our staff saying that this is true, they believe this. To me, this highlights that they recognize that continued growth and professional development is a key value of our organization. However, when you look at the second statement I have listed here, "My principal or direct supervisor identifies specific opportunities for me to grow professionally," we see that number only at 59%. So we're seeing that there's a gap there between this is a value that we have and then how are we intentionally providing those opportunities for our staff? And then finally, one other piece. "I see professional growth and long-term career opportunities with North Kansas City schools, 61% favorable." Staff retention is not being addressed tonight, but as we know, all of these factors kind of feed into one another, right? When we talk about recognition and well-being and retention, there are factors that influence all of those components the same. So, long story short, we've got reason to take a look at culture of recognition and really be intentional about it. The specific statement or goal on the balance scorecard this year says that North Kansas City schools will expand systems and structures to create a culture of recognition. And there are three words within that goal that really stick out to me: systems, structures, and culture. Culture, as we know it, is shaped by the collection of interactions. So how are we engaging with one another? And so then the question becomes, what systems and structures will most impact our interactions with staff involving recognition? How can we infuse recognition so deeply into our day-to-day interactions at all levels that it just becomes a part of who we are in a systematic way? As I said, I've had a lot of time to really dig into the data with this. And what I've been able to synthesize from our staff between all three data sources is they're defining recognition as these four things. First of all, being seen. I want to be seen. I want you to be present with me and be able to identify the great work that's happening, attach value to that. I want to be supported. I want to know that you're in my corner. And I want to be celebrated. I want there to be some sort of acclaim to be attached to the good things that are happening. The recognition study not only provided ideas for us, but gave us just some general principles to conduct ourselves by. The first one was keep it simple. And this one's probably the one that struck me the most because I think when I dove into the recognition study, I was looking for some sort of grand gesture or this big thing we were going to be able to do to make a difference. And what our people are saying is, we really just wanted to be personal and specific and frequent. So, simple things were shared or suggested by staff, such as the email shout-outs, face-to-face opportunities, and making note of the staff shout-outs that are shared from colleagues as being important to them, but really wanting to see that more from their building-level admin and also from central office admin. Make it systemic. So where there are pockets of things going on that are gray with recognition, how do we create supports and structures that will create some consistency so that we're not missing pockets of employee groups? There were some really fun suggestions mentioned as well, such as wanting jeans days and spirit wear, and not just because of the desire for more casual wear, but for the sense of community that those activities tend to promote. There was also discussion around how do we spread out the recognition that we provide for staff so that it's not just when we're doing Culture of Excellence and Honor Cadre or Staff Appreciation Week in May, but how do we spread out those opportunities throughout the year? And so, and looking at ways that we can do that within our current systems as well. So, we've got employee shout-outs that are shared through our newsletters. We've got inspire stories that really highlight key individuals and special things that they're doing. We have our extraordinary educational experiences. We've got a lot of things that happen here. We also have recently, within the last year, culture cruises where Dr. Johnson and Dr. Freezing visit our sites and just look for how the culture of the building is impacting the learning that's taking place there and really getting some positive feedback from that. And so, the sentiment with this key finding was to promote those systems. Some people know how to utilize those and some people don't. So, spreading the word and also strengthening those pieces as well. And then finally, probably the strongest message was really investing in our classified staff. My favorite quote was, "These individuals are the engine of the operation. They're behind the scenes doing meaningful work that is worthy of being recognized and brought out into the spotlight." And so, we use those findings to really then drill down into some specific action steps. So as next steps, what we're doing is we're engaging our district leaders and CTTN Subcommittee. District leaders, we've shared this information with them, given them an opportunity to collaborate with each other and think about at the building level, department level, some ways that they can strengthen recognition there. But we've also got a committee of district leaders on both the classified and certified side who are going to come together and help drive this work forward. And then also doing that in tandem with the CTTN Subcommittee. So having both of those groups look at these action items, vet them, provide feedback and input going forward. The second next step here is to audit and strengthen our district-wide systems. Although the folks that we recognize through Culture of Excellence and Honor Cadre, they have a really special moment in the sun, there are, as I said, some employees that don't have that opportunity or just the way that it's structured, they miss out on that opportunity to be recognized. So we want to dig in and figure out our criteria for selecting individuals for that award. Is it really capturing a representative group of our employees and offering a fair shot to everyone? And then again, how can we do that more often, such as through quarterly recognitions as opposed to saving it for that one time in the school year? The next three items that you have here go back to that keep it simple, make it personal. So, our superintendents already go out to our sites every year in the fall, and so we're going to embed recognition into those site visits every time that they go, asking our leaders to share with us, "Who is someone that is doing something that may be going unnoticed that we can take some time to recognize during our site visit?" We are also going to increase the routine site visits that we have for our central office leaders. So in order to recognize more often, you've got to be around the work that's happening more often. You've got to be there to witness it, to be a part of it. And so, creating routine visits for everyone to get out, but then also with that, providing some leader training on positive coaching and feedback so that it's something that anyone can do, whether they are used to providing structured feedback to their staff or not. That way, we're ensuring that everyone's getting the quality feedback that is deserving. And then finally, model a culture of recognition. We know culture happens, what's modeled from the top down. And so, we've been asking questions even within the cabinet team. How are we modeling recognition with our leaders? How are we being very intentional in how we recognize the good work that our leaders are doing and highlighting them? And so those are a few of our next steps. Again, we're going to flesh this out a bit more through those two committees of district leaders and the CTTN Subcommittee. The next piece I'm going to invite Dr. Coy up to share about, this is actually from last year's balance scorecard, as you will remember, and how the board made a tremendous investment in our staff in saying, "We want to provide protected time for professional development for all staff, not just our certified staff and our administration, but particularly wanting to make sure we ensure those opportunities for our classified staff." And Dr. Coy has done some tremendous work with that, which she will share about with you now.
Well, good evening. After hearing Dr. Avilia's presentation, I feel I'd be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to thank you, our Board of Education, for your unwavering support and dedication to our students, to our families. It is because of that dedication we're able to provide extraordinary learning opportunities for both staff and students in the state-of-the-art facilities. So, thank you. Speaking of extraordinary learning opportunities, I am here tonight to share with you some steps we're taking to ensure that for all 1,500 classified staff. But before I do that, I have some special guests here this evening that I asked to attend. They are classified staff members. I thought, we're talking about classified staff while I'd like to have all 1,500 here tonight. I was told that was not a possibility, so I have narrowed it down to five. And these five, who I would like to recognize, embody the three tenets of this work. The first tenet is investment and growth. Kelly Roy, if you could please stand. Kelly Roy, a dedicated member of our district for 13 years, epitomizes the spirit of our growth initiative. Originally in food service, Kelly had a vision of becoming the first to welcome new employees and families, leading her to become the welcoming face of our district support at the front desk of our central office. After her roles as a clerk and building administrative assistant, Kelly has found her true calling, creating a warm, inviting atmosphere for everyone. Our second tenet, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Lucas Alfry, if you could please stand. Lucas, our dedicated facility manager with 12 years of service, stands as an exemplary positive male role model for our students. Through his unwavering commitment to their well-being, Lucas has not only maintained our facilities, but also played a vital role in their personal development. His selflessness extends beyond his professional duties, as he has consistently been the first to contribute financially to ensure that our students' needs are met, embodying a profound dedication to their success and growth. Steve Stewart, with 16 years of dedicated service to our district, Steve, who has worn the hats of both custodian and mechanic, is a true asset to our team. Beyond his technical expertise, Steve is known for his ability to provide uplifting pep talks, serving as a source of motivation and inspiration for students and colleagues alike. His enduring positivity and encouragement have created a more vibrant and supportive atmosphere within our school community. And our final tenet, customer service. With six years of dedicated service, Stacy Crockett has cultivated meaningful relationships with students and their families by providing exceptional customer service. Through Stacy's unwavering commitment to fostering a welcoming and supportive environment, Stacy has become a trusted point of contact, offering guidance and assistance whenever needed. Stacy's genuine care and rapport building skills have had a lasting and positive impact on her school's community. Thank you. So as I had noted, there are three tenets to this work. The first is investment. We want our classified staff to know that their work is so important that we're willing to take time to invest in that work. And so whether that be just investing in their current role because they want to be the best facility manager, the best food and nutritional service provider, or whether that be, "I have other passions and aspirations within this organization. I just do not have the skills yet to obtain those positions." And so we're going to let them know that we're willing to invest in them and provide those opportunities. It is through that, we're going to foster organizational growth and capacity within our organization, and we're going to cultivate leadership opportunities for our classified staff. Because as we take advantage of these professional development days, they're going to be the ones leading this work. We have very skilled classified staff who need to share their skills with their colleagues. So they're going to have the platform to do that. They're also going to help us lead the equity work and the customer service work. And then we're going to provide a platform for ongoing feedback. The absolute worst thing that could happen is that we're polling people for a day and they don't find this work meaningful. The second tenet is equity, inclusion, and belonging. It is through that work that we're going to empower our classified staff to strengthen their relationships, not only with students, but with each other. When they have a deeper level of understanding from each other's cultures and backgrounds, we're adding a different perspective in which they can see things. And when they have a new perspective, it creates an inclusive environment. And that inclusive environment fosters an environment where we are eliminating barriers because we can see those barriers ourselves. So we are going to have deeper relationships with each other and help each other and our students have access to things maybe they wouldn't normally have access to. Customer service. As I mentioned about Stacy Crockett, that customer service is vital. Our families have a choice. And what we're finding is when they're upset and they choose a different choice, it's not because of the academic opportunities or the experiences, it comes down to sometimes the customer service. There's a breakdown in communication. And so we need to empower our classified staff who have more FaceTime in most cases, our bus drivers, our administrative assistants, our lunch clerks, that work directly with our families, the skill set to understand and effectively communicate so that they can help and provide the assistance that they're seeking. Also, we want to make sure that we're leaving a positive impact each time we interact with our families. And so that's going to help with our branding of North Kansas City. When someone says, "My child attends the North Kansas City School District," I want them to have the feelings that you felt when I spoke about these five individuals. We want it to be positive. So how are we going to do this? I'm really excited to share with you, we're going to host our first ever empowered rally. You may ask yourself, "What is an empowered rally?" Well, empowered is the term that we have selected to reference our work with classified professional development. And the reason why we selected that term is because we feel it embodies what we're really trying to achieve, and that is through professional development, we're empowering our classified staff. So we're going to have our first ever empowered rally. We're going to bring all 1,500 classified staff to the Staley Fieldhouse on September 22nd. The theme of that event is a difference maker. As I shared with you through the testament of these individuals, they truly are difference makers. And so we're going to bring them all together, and we're going to celebrate them, and we're going to rally around this initiative. So at this event, they will have swag bags. They will, logistically, we're going to provide party buses, which are going to be our air-conditioned school buses with some water and snacks there for them to be dropped off at the Staley Fieldhouse. We'll have some fun experiences for them to really foster that fellowship with each other and just to embrace that moment where all 15 and the power that they have as an organized collective group. And then we're going to bring in two guest speakers. Our keynote speaker is Joshua Peach from Be Awesome, and he's really going to talk about leaving a legacy, just like these individuals have left a legacy within their school community. He's going to talk to them about how every classified staff has the opportunity to leave a legacy. That's going to be followed by a workshop by Dr. Ashley Smith from Peak Mind. She's a psychologist. She's going to help them develop a skill set by leading them through a workshop of, "If this is a legacy I want to leave behind, how do I present myself in the work that I do? What are some friction points that maybe I encounter that I don't present myself the way I want to be remembered?" And so she's going to give them some tools to equip them with that. After that empowered rally, we're going to kick off our empowered series, and all that is, is those following professional development days. That is going to be equivalent to one workday per month for our classified staff. We are going to maintain that investment focus, so we're going to make sure that we're providing them opportunities that are going to help them be more efficient and effective in their work, but also give them opportunities to excel within our organization. It's going to be peer-led, equity-driven, and we're going to have that customer service emphasis at each of those professional development, on each of those days. And then ultimately, we're going to have a committee formed by classified staff who are going to provide us with feedback as to, "What was that experience? When we polled you for a day, did you find that to be relevant? Were you able to take something back and immediately apply that? What can we do better next time?" So each PD day, we only get better and stronger. All of which is going to leave us, have empowered relentless champions for all students and for each other. So at this time, I would gladly take any questions that you may have regarding this initiative.
Madam President, could we ask our four guests to please stand so that we give them appropriate applause? Appreciate you very much.
Questions or comments?
Thank you all. I mean, this is really, and thank you all for being here. I mean, I realize you have evenings and people to be with and stuff like that, so, you know, to share your evening with us, I really, I really do appreciate it because you guys work really hard. You're on the front line. And my mother taught for a long time, and she always said, "You better make a best friend with your janitor, and you better make a best friend with your school secretary before you even meet the principal." I mean, that was hugely important. So, I really appreciate the work that we're doing on this, and yeah, I think it's going to be great. I hope, I hope it's going to be beyond your wildest expectation. And you too. And if it's not, you need to let us know. Okay?
Thank you, Madam President. This is great. I think this is very helpful. And I'm hopeful too, whatever feedback you get, you'll be able to incorporate it going forward. We want to make sure that whatever this is, it's going to be beneficial in the long run and the kinds of things that everybody is reporting on in the surveys. So, this is amazing. Thank you for this.
First of all, you've done a lot in just a couple months. So again, if you started, I know just brand-new in this position in July, you've moved miles in just a short period of time, so thank you very much. You know, we do spend so much time really in trying to promote staff development with our teachers. This is a wonderful opportunity to do the same for our support staff. So I just support you in your efforts and hope to hear good results. Thank you.
Thank you. I know when we put this in the balance scorecard, it was because we recognize it takes 3,500 people to deliver the product we're looking at, not 1,700. And that it was not by accident that we expanded it, it was not by accident. It was pure intentionality, and it was investing. You used the word earlier, Dr. Coy, and that's exactly what, when you think about taking 1,500 people and investing a day a month in their professional development, if you did the math, it comes out to a pretty good-sized number. But, the board said, "Our people are worth it." They've chosen to invest a big chunk of their lives working with us to make great experiences for our kids, and if we can make them better at that, it's a worthy investment. And so, every single person, the two friends that Jane mentioned and the rest of them is valuable. You know, my grandson is living with us right now, and the other day, took him to the bus stop, and he, as he got out of the car, he said, "I can't wait to get on my bus." Now, that's what we want every student to have on the way to school, and so that's a bus driver that's made a relationship. So that's, that's why we're making this investment. And thank you for your investment.
I love this so much. I really very much appreciate it. I've always been on the administrative side of things in my career, and that's what, I mean, whatever we do when we spend our time doing it, it's our careers, and that's what we want our people, our employees, to feel like that they have a career. And so, by investing in our employees regardless of what it is that they're doing, we want them to know that we see this as your career. This is, you know, we appreciate the investment that you are putting into us, and we're going to, you know, invest back into you. And so I just very much appreciate that. And I think too, the goal in this is to show that we value all of our employees. And so, I think that that is a big question to get back, and the feedback question is, you know, do, you know, did this contribute to your sense of value in this district? Because I think that's the absolute most important thing that a person wants to feel when they're putting their heart and soul into a job, is like, you know, is my effort valued? Am I valued? Am I valued as a person? Is my work valued? And we just would never want our, any of our staff, teachers or classified staff or whatever, to ever feel like their work is not valued because we're all working for the same goal here. And so, our people are what we do. And so, that's everybody. So thank you very much. I really much appreciate it. I'm curious about the survey and kind of, when was that survey taken?
The employee engagement survey was administered this past May.
Okay, so that was from that survey? Okay. That's why I was wondering if there was a comparison, but that was from the past survey. Okay, gotcha. And so then we have another workshop that will have another survey, and then we'll see this, we'll see the results at the end of the year? Is that right?
It will be, we'll provide you another, we'll provide you a full report of the employee engagement survey results from this past May.
Gotcha. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. It really was an inspiring presentation, and I know the work has been very heartfelt and exciting behind the scenes in getting this together. I think two things. I've already observed so much more social media of individuals doing good things in our schools across the board. I've seen more faces and more just difference makers, I think, and not just the persons, but the things that they're doing in the last few weeks of school, or just this beginning of school year in the last few weeks, that have just really pointed to the value add that this is bringing. And I think it... I think it resonates not just with me, but with coworkers and with the community and families and lots of people. So I appreciate that. I also really like the fact that, that keep it simple, but that the personal impact and the frequency was kind of highlighted. And I like that we're listening and hearing that. And I, I do think that that's a really valued comment. Lastly, in my heart of hearts, I know this board has always valued every staff person on this, on this team for all the right reasons. But I, I think the inclusion, the investment in our intentionality this time is really changing, is going to change our culture. And I really appreciate Kelly, Lucas, Steve, and Stacy for being here as a face of that tonight, and also all the people that you represent in your various teams. And I hope that they hear our appreciation. But thank you so much for being here. We, we do appreciate you. So, wonderful work. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else you would like to add?
I would, I would just add my gratitude to Dr. Coy for, for taking this on. As Paul said, she hit the ground running, and this is one of the things we kind of, her first experience in a cabinet meeting was presenting this, and she got to page two of 20 in her, her handout, and we just kind of overtook her. So we kind of felt bad. I didn't welcome her as, as much as maybe we should, but she, she's definitely getting it right. But I'll also go back to Jessica Martin and, and the team that she led around strategic planning that, that put this into place for the board to place it on our balance scorecard to get this work done. So it's extremely important work, and a lot of people have had their hands in it, and I couldn't agree more. It's going to be a wonderful opportunity for all staff.
Well, it was a short meeting tonight, but very, very valuable. So thank you all for coming. I'm going to adjourn our meeting and very proud of the time. Thank you for coming tonight.